We can discuss legal matters.
Very good. Meeting's going to be a little different today. We're going to conduct our business until Senator Andy Dennehy comes in. He is coming in to talk about the billboards. We will have citizens to be heard, but if you wouldn't mind, if you're going to talk about the billboards, we'd love to have you have that discussion all together. Everyone will get a chance to talk, as much as we want the citizens to know. All right, the motion to approve expenditures for period ending April 21st.
Second?
Second.
Questions? Okay, Paul, Sarah? Yes?
Okay.
Motion carries in. For the Council of Midwestern, have a motion.
Second?
Okay, questions?
Yes. I'll have to get the final here. The minutes are not after it. It's showing that the agenda from last, you know, the last meeting there had the Downingtown Outdoor LLC and the Jefferson Avenue Borough parking under deferred business when, in fact, it wasn't on the agenda. So, we need to take that out, take out under deferred business that actually needs to be blanked, because there was nothing under deferred business for that meeting.
We actually missed it before. We had talked, and I said I would put it only deferred, because we were working on those things and they wanted to come up. If you guys would prefer not to have any deferred business, that's fine with me. But that was just to let the citizens know that if they went on the website, that we didn't forget them and it was stolen.
I mean, that's fine that you did tell the citizens and let them know, but just the fact is that it wasn't on the agenda. This needs to be an accurate reflection of what they saw online, because if you're adding things to the agenda that they actually didn't, that the public actually wasn't aware of, then that's not accurate, because then people would say, "Well, I would have been at the meeting, but it wasn't, you know..."
I believe that Sarah stood up and said, "Hey, they should be deferred." And I said to her, "Yes." We missed it, and we won't. So I thought that would be reflected in for deferred business, and that's why we punched it in. You want to take all this up to you guys? Counsel, that's a reason I put it on, because Sarah wants our attention. So, we did discuss it, and I looked out.
No, you didn't.
But it had been advertised, had been on there. So it's really important that the agenda is reflexively advertised to the public. We can't adjust the agenda at that point.
For those who say it's not the agenda, fine. You might put it in as top. So you're saying we could have dropped it down, just moved it down into the discussion and said that was deferred?
Exactly, yeah. Deferred business should be...
Yeah, that's fine. I have no problem with that. If we can do that, guys, with that change, we'll take it out deferred and just put it into the conversation. Is that okay?
Yeah. So, yeah, because Sarah Brown commented on that. And the other thing that is missing here that Sarah Brown commented on, it wasn't just the deferred items, but she also commented on Jefferson Avenue parking and the billboard. So that one should be added, because she commented on it.
Let me tell you a couple. Do you want to call? Does anybody else want to call? I know you didn't, but that's for Counsel. We need more than one.
On the video.
You're just adding that to the updates?
Yeah, as where it says, "Citizens to be deferred." Sarah Brown commented on the deferred items, which is cool.
No problem as well.
And also Jefferson Avenue and the billboard.
Are you okay with it?
Sure.
Want to make a secondary? Want to add that or something?
I meant my motion to put that...
Changes.
Yep.
Second?
Yes.
Second. Any discussions on the changes?
Nope.
All right. Okay, yes, thank you, Andy. All righty, next, we're going to jump down to Downingtown Electronic Billboard. Yes, Senator Dennehy, that was the best. Again, as I announced, Andy, would you like to, you want just to sit up front? Would you like to stand or how?
Why don't you stand here with your permission?
Oh, absolutely. And what we're going to do, guys, everybody's going to get a chance to talk. If we could just have some type of order, any and all citizens will come up to the podium and want to speak, other than the borough's permission. So, Andy, the lawyer, the place chief, anybody who works for the borough, because we know who they are, we got citizens come up so we can keep track of them. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Well, hello, everyone.
Hello.
I think I know each and every one of you well. And I wanted to address this issue, if I may, because I'm in the process of developing legislation that's involving digital billboards. And I put in a column today in the paper, and I'll give it to you at the end, because it really summarizes the comments that I'm going to make. You know, we got involved in this, or I got involved in it, just leave one thing here, and then we'll step to go. Because when the lights went on, a number of residents called me. And in fact, I think it was summarized in one email I got that said, "The borough says the experts involved in this said no one would be affected." That's not the council, all right? Let's get that clear. It's the experts involved, would no one be affected? You have to see this to believe it. Just travel off 113 down Farmhouse, and you enter into another galaxy. Can you please help? Right? And it's my job as the senator from your area to help. That's my job. Now, in addressing this, let me say that there are really three billboard controversies going on at the same time within my district. One had been resolved, is Phoenixville, a couple of years back, and they went to court, and the judge ruled in favor of the borough. The second one is in Lower Oxford Township, and that situation still continues, where hundreds of citizens have showed up, because in order to protect the agricultural rural heritage of that area, they felt that such a digital billboard would not be in their interest. And that is not resolved yet. And the third is here in Downingtown. Now, when the residents called, I went to visit, just like I believe you did the night after the council meeting. And it is right there, it's like, almost, you know? And it is like this thing in the sky, you know, when you look up. And there is really no buffer at this point in time. In addition, it's not just the people who are in Northlake Drive who initially called me, but if you go throughout the neighborhood, you will see, depending on the topography, and Andy knows this, Eric is your ward, and I think, who else is yours? And yours as well. But you know, the topography changes, so it depends where you are. Now, what we want to do, I believe that based on what occurred in Downingtown, I have the basis of four issues that I want to put in legislative form. Listen, new technology is here. The law has to change with the new technology. Our law is essentially based on a 1971 state statute, where these things weren't even dreamed up at that point, right? And it's a combination of the original statute plus case law that is based on the statute. So it's time that we really review and look at this situation. And let's talk about four issues. I read all the testimony, and I thanked the borough for allowing me to review the written testimony that was given here, you know? You should keep a record of the hearings. And what was interesting is, the statement was quite clear. This would affect only one place, Norwood House, right? There was no mention of it affecting the citizens who live in Northlake Drive and in the roads, nor was there any mention about the new development that, whether it comes or not, you know, that Sarah Peck has been working on for a long time. In fact, what I'll give you in the council is this. In essence, what you were told was a light pattern that went this way, right? But in essence, what we see is a light pattern that's very, very different. And I think, in fairness to the borough, they, and your representatives, they were not, they were taught one thing, based on the testimony, to find out something very different. And I believe it would be truthful when I say you were surprised yourself when you were invited to go up there. Now, the difficulty is, we're going to have to, in legislation, have some understandings as to what light pollution is, what impact the light is, some guarantees that there's some criteria. So you, as a borough council, or any borough or local government, has some criteria in which they can make some judgments upon. And second area that, as I read there, and in fact, if I remember from the testimony, all the concerns about buffering was in the area where they showed the light, and there was some statements that I had talked to the owners of the apartment, and that was taken care of. But I've been led to believe it, you can correct me, that hasn't been taken care of yet, is that correct?
It's our understanding that Norwood House Apartments obviously declined the bumper at this point. They'd like to keep the option open, but right now, at this time, they have no interest in showing up.
Well, then, those, I mean, that's the decision of the owner, but that doesn't necessarily protect the residents who live there. And more importantly, none of this discussion, and we can only hope that the applicant will take care of the other areas in town that are affected by the light, that you had no idea as a council would be affected. The second matter is a matter of view sheds. Now, what I want you to understand is that this county has spent millions of dollars, not hundreds, not thousands, not hundreds of thousands, but millions of dollars to protect the open spaces. We have always understood that most people aren't going to walk on that land, but there was something special about the land, and the ability to see it and to feel it and sense it. It indeed is the essence of what we're about, as Chester Countyans. And all of our efforts can be of naught, can go down the drain, because there's nothing in the law that I can see, and perhaps your solicitor will do some more investigation, coming from a very fine firm, I might humbly add, as to whether there is. I couldn't find it, okay? Protection of view sheds. Protection of light, yes. Protection of view sheds. Now, let me give an example. And as you know, I was county commissioner for fourteen years before I did this to the Senate. And thank you all for having the legislature all these years. Now, when we put together the deal, the arrangement of Church Farm School in the '90s, I think it was '94, '96, I remember distinctly in the discussions with Commissioner, Martin A. Commissioner, I think it was Tanna at that time, what we said was that we wanted to preserve this piece of property, so that as it developed more and more, it would be like our Central Park. And just like people today go to New York and say, "Wow, Olmstead, you designed that," and they were all very bright, you know? "This is wonderful that they preserved this." We wanted to make sure we gave it that. I see nothing in the law, and again, I defer to lawyers, I see nothing in the law that would prevent, unless Wes Whitman had to find the zone where these signs could be, that would present a digital billboard from going up on that property and everything we worked for down the drain. Now, this is a very serious matter, because it means that how are we going to protect the open spaces of this county? And in fact, if you remember, that that is the key issue in Southern Chester County and Lower Oxford. It's an agriculture, it's a rural area, so defined on the map as it presently exists. And so the citizens said, "If this can be done, then all of our efforts in vain." We often worry that somehow, and we've worked very hard to make sure easements would ever be compromised, but we have not thought about the potential that light and new digital signs, depending on their size, could compromise everything we work for. So we have to, in legislative form, look at that, okay? Third area, I read the report and the statements from the engineers dealing with the traffic and accidents report. And it's very nice they have a whole thing with National, and there's this formula that takes a little while to figure it out, but you follow it through. So, let me do this. So I called the planning commission, and I said, "You know, about a month ago, you told me that one of the highest accident areas in Chester County was the exit on 322. And if I understood the traffic report meant from Rock Raymond Road, which is right there at that exit, and whether they included exit or not, I don't know, to 113." And yet, based on the studies of the Delaware Valley Commission, you know, Planning Commission, this has been identified to us in this county as a very high accident area, okay? Now, there's something else that has to be understood that was never asked, and we have to make sure when we put in a piece of legislation that these questions are asked. Not just about the accident, but what are plans for our highways? Where are we going? First of all, understand, and because I just went through it this afternoon, get the codes right, you don't move on that highway going that way at the end of the day, or coming this way. In fact, for whatever reason, the accident rate is higher going eastbound than westbound, but it is the highest of any of the areas with the exits. So how do we get accurate accident information that is locally based and not compared, say, against a Vine Sweet Expressway or the Chicago Expressway nationally? Because that's our concern. Well, you will see on Monday morning, because you're invited, Steve and whoever in council, that there will be an update on our plans for Route 30 bypass. Because our concern is that as soon as we open all the lanes on Route 202, we'll have increased people using the bypass, and we'll have total gridlock. So if a conversation had simply taken place, or was, would have been required to take place, PNDOT would have been required to tell you that on the tip, you know, the 12-year plan right now, and in design right now, or the beginnings of design, is to make it three lanes going from 113 straight out to Reeseville Road, and to repair the rest of the road out to Route 10, to smooth it out. We fought very hard in this county to get that taken care of. Now, one of the plans you're going to see presented on Monday is that there is difficulty building a third lane on either side of the area between 113 and Wallace Avenue. Yeah, Sound altar, you don't have much space. So what consideration is this? Is that our one plan, it's not necessarily, we're going to discuss all of them, is that that Norwood House Road, which I believe now is under private control, in parts is Borough Road, that makes it a little bit easier for PNDOT, would become, as you see in parts of 202, first of all, the exit's going to be moved to 113, so it'll be a four-way exit, all right? Which it should have been as when it was original, rebound. That exit at Wallace would be closed. And you'd go down Norwood Road, and that will become the feeder road off of 113 into the three-lane, that's the third lane, all right? In essence, on that side. You see that if you go up to Great Valley, you know how one of the roads goes off and you feed in? And this is the same concept. Well, man, if that ends up being the choice, I don't know what happens to the sign. It goes right through the sign in order to get there, and then with the location, the sign will come into question again. And if the sign's not there, any payments promised to borough might well disappear as well. But a lot of this could have been solved, or at least discussed, if the PNDOT regulations made it clear that from day one, that the applicant is not just the applicant in PNDOT, but it's the applicant, PNDOT, and the local community. And that we would insist that any local changes on that road be made part of what is going on. So we're off, all right? And you have to pop me off eventually. Chip, you know how long I've talked, my friend.
Chip has no problem telling people.
Thank you, Mayor. But here's where, you have a problem. People who testified today, their backyards are lit up. I don't blame Council on iota, because Council was never told that the impact of light would be there. They were told it's in the testimony when the question was asked, "Who will it impact?" And then I believe Counselor McFone asked for them, "Would it impact the new Carden Ponds? Would it impact other neighborhoods?" And the answer was, "No." In the testimony, I believe you had asked that, Patricia. And so you were making a decision based on information from experts who you trusted, which perhaps it wasn't full, didn't have the fullness, maybe didn't have the knowledge, maybe they assumed this is what was going to be. But you made a decision based on it. The second matter is, so how I want to proceed, so you know, is the following. We will put in legislation initially dealing with PNDOT, in the PNDOT process by which people can get the permission on designs. And that legislation will simply say that the, once we put the legislation in, PNDOT might do it, just do it. You know, and I'll work with Senator Rafferty, who, as you know, is a good friend of this borough, and is one of my closest friends, he's chairman of the Transportation Committee. And the idea is to make clear that Chip, you, the mayor, Steve, you'll be there when the applicant comes. So before the permit is issued by PNDOT, you have your say, not after, at that time. And a series of questions will be asked. One is dealing with what is the future of this road? Because in four years, that, I mean, it's on the chip, the money's there, the design starts, that's why they're meeting with you, you know, on Monday morning in township, is to find, is to discuss the various designs. And so that, I think, we can take care of easy enough, and I don't imagine that my fellow senators are going to give me a great deal of difficulty, especially if Senator Rafferty is with me, is bipartisan, he said it, and I think we can get it through. Now, the other part that deals with light, that deals with view shed, that deals perhaps with other aspects of traffic and accidents, I think we need to get thorough information. There was a bill put in 2011 afterward, Battles of Brimmar and Havreford and in there, and it never got out of the local government, right? So I don't want that to happen again. So my aim is that we put in initial legislation, and we spend the next five to six months trying to find solutions. What about the states did? And very important, we talked to the industry, because you find solutions when you work with an industry, when you work with people. So that we can then, together, find a way, because what we find in the legislature is, if you try to ram something through, you never get it done. But if you work in partnership with the boroughs, Association of Boroughs, with VSATs in the townships, with the county commissions association, with the industry itself, that we can come up with some solution. They might not make everyone happy, but remember, a compromise is never designed to make everyone happy. But what we have to do, my friends, is understand the new technologies out there, and we have to make our statutes to understand and reflect this new technology. Finally, in putting all this together, let me say, I trust that the applicant will be working with the borough. I would hope that the appropriate buffers that were going to be put in front of Norwood House would now be put in front of these other neighborhoods where we know, where we know that they get lit up, because we saw it, we were there. I would also hope that you would go back and look at the time when it would be off. It might have to just go off as soon as it gets dark, and come on the next morning when it gets light, you know? It's not as bad in the day as it is at night, at least when I traveled through the neighborhood. I was going to go to the Stufel Trail, I have to figure out whether, but I confess, I was raining out in downtown, otherwise I would have gone down the trail for you and my little flashlight, you know? And, but the other aspect is this, you made a conditional use decision to allow a much bigger screen, based on some concessions you got. Most of those concessions you got, you would have had anyway by law, if you looked at the law, I said, in terms of sound, in terms of animation, in terms of what occurred. Some of the townships actually worked for concessions where instead of every six seconds something changing, they extended to seven seconds or eight seconds. One of the difficulties is not just the light, and I think it's up to the neighbors to tell what they feel, but it's that you're sitting there, all of a sudden, the light changes. You know what I mean? It's like watching television, you know, television, you know? And that's distracting to you if you're trying to go to sleep or it's in your house. And so you might want some discussions about how you might bring in the size. Not that people would have to take it down, but maybe the whole screen doesn't have to use. I'm not an expert on that technology, I wouldn't know, but I can tell you, there's a heck of a difference in the size in township, which I just went by, because this is around four times, actually, it's about five to six times the size of the one in Downingtown. To the credit of the company, they've worked out things with West Town, and finally came to a solution, and I trust that they will, and I hope that they'll do the same with you. So I wanted to just tell you and summarize that the citizens called me. I went up there, and then we had a meeting a week ago Sunday. Mayor Maxwell, Council President Chip, as well as Counselor Hannah Feldman joined us up there, and I think we heard the people loud and clear. And you know, people ask the question, "What do we do?" And one of the things that has to be done is, you guys now need to work with the applicant to see what you can work out, with assistance of your attorney, your solicitor. I mean, from people's perspective up there, I mean, the solution that was given, but let's saw it down, is not a viable solution, all right? I mean, and that was just said, just so you understand. But some people said, "Maybe our answer is, maybe the only thing left we can do as citizens is to call those people who advertise on it and just express to them that we're disappointed that because of what, we want to tell them what is done to our neighborhood." Not that I'm suggesting that, but people were looking for anything they could do. And those of you who were here, remember that was one, is this my right? That was stated by people in the neighborhood. So that's in summary, and we will proceed with the first part of legislation. And you know, one of the reasons I came is also, is you have a resolution on your agenda tonight to give support for the efforts on this bill. I hope after everything I said, that this council would be supportive of that, because we want to make sure that other boroughs and townships, that we have some kind of framework. Not a framework that stops the industry, private enterprise, that's a perfect reason. You know, we're not trying to stop business or hurt anyone, we just want to work it out. And I really do hope, and you know, a part of that resolution, I don't know if you put it in, but one part I wanted, was to say that we're urging the industry itself to work with us in the legislature. So we do this as a team, we do this together. And finally, somewhere in my, by the way, this is, if you want to go onto the internet, you're going to find town after town just going through the same thing you are, all up and down the main line, and also out towards Appington and north of the place. It's really the same issues, all right? Let's try to figure out a way so we don't go through this, and every township, we have some criteria. Finally, a piece I wrote was in the newspaper this morning, and so since I thought if I handed that out, you would understand exactly where I'm coming from. And let me state my appreciation once again to council. All of us have known each other, some of us have known each other for, what's going on, now, thirty-some years? And we're all friends, we work together, and it's my job to help you and help the citizens, and I want, and let's all work together, and let's work with the company and industry so that we come up with some solution. Mark Thompson, we really need your help on this as well, the advice of your firm, you know, and excellence of legal advice that you give. And I think that we can solve this, everyone's benefit. So thank you so, so much. Thank you.
Senator, we're going to go, Andy, we're going to do things a little unorthodox. So since you're here...
Let me just, yeah, go ahead.
Since you're here, next we're going to have Mark speak, but since we're here, not to tie you up, I hope maybe if we could jump over to the citizens, we wait a few minutes, and we could jump over to the resolution. and we could jump over to the resolution, he had a six, two dash eight, that had his name, so Senator Dammian is the resident.
I agree with that.
Maybe we do that while we're here, so.
Motion, a second, discussion, not yet.
Yes, I just want to thank the senator for being so active and passionate about this issue, having legislative response, considering, I think, very unique, your leadership on these issues. I just want to point out to the group, we've had the great portion of working with the senator on a number of issues this week, the government, SEC, transportation, it's part of this issue, these important people, he's committed to seeing this through, and whatever I can do as mayor of Dint, I will support Senator Dammian's efforts on this billboard. I think that he, we might have a middle, medium range option here to help the citizens in this community. I never saw when this came before council, something that would be affecting North Lake community, I could not be more disappointed than it has. I don't feel that electronic billboards companies have been completely honest with what their billboards affect and the amount of people that they affect, and having that never happening downtown before, I think a lot of everyone's kind of caught off guard by that. So I think we need to work at changing our local zoning to restrict electronic billboards permanently. I think we need to whatever we can to improve the conditions in the North Lake community in whatever capacity we can do that, and the senator's helping us move forward on those types of things. So I look forward to working with the senator to resolve this, and I just want to thank him publicly for everything he's done this week, speaking with the governor, as we meet the end of secondary transportation, we certainly appreciate that.
And that doesn't deal with the billboards, with the governor, deals with our train station, which we're trying to achieve. And hopefully, we've made some progress today, perhaps.
Anybody else on council comment? All right, and guys, I want to make a comment. Senator Dammian was bumping beyond on Sundays, calling us, talking to us forty-five minutes to an hour each on this Sunday, met with us Sunday, I think it's, thank you, you were bumping beyond.
It's my job.
It wasn't a job, you brought the personal touch too, and we really appreciate that in downtown as we always do.
I appreciate doing that, that's the only reason, I guess, as a Democrat in this Republican county, I've been able to get elected four times as senator, last time by sixteen percent. But it means that you go out there and you work very hard, and you represent the people, and you don't try to do it in a partisan way, you look for the solutions. And I think together, we want to be respectful to the industry, and we want to work together to find the appropriate solutions. And I'm glad that you're going to do a zoning change, because your only real protection comes when you, at current, before a law, is when you define a certain area as the area that billboards, electronic or other billboards, electronic billboards can go in, and that's why Phoenixville Borough was able to win that case. They wanted to put it on Nut Road, in fact, somewhere near the hospital, they couldn't do it because the billboards were down in another area of town, and the court said, we haven't excluded anything, you just have to follow what the zoning is, and hopefully your solicitor will work with you on the appropriate things in the future. But you now have to deal through negotiations, hopefully in solving what is here. And the one thing I will stay around for is to hear the citizens out when they call. Thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
This industry is so far ahead of us. They're always playing catch-up, just like there's a new cell phone every day, we just weren't new, it was something new to us, so hopefully you guys will help us. We have a motion, a second, all in favor, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I was wondering, could I ask a couple questions of the senator?
I'm happy if you want to.
Yes, can we get Mark to discuss a couple things, the Democratic Party, your question?
Oh, sure, I didn't know, the senator.
No, I'll wait around.
You said it's gonna stay.
Not for your whole waiting, I assure you, but I do want to hear the citizens out, that's my job, my responsibility.
And Mark, we went in detail of this, can you?
Mr. President, I appreciate the senator talking about this in a macro sense. From a land use perspective, we were looking at it in the micro sense. Like Phoenixville, Downingtown Borough does provide for billboard signs in the industrial zoning district, and that happened to be where the property, where the sign is located, is, the industrial zoning district. Council was presented with an application for a sign that's the size that's permitted, six hundred and seventy-two square feet, in that location where it is permitted under the zoning ordinance. Held a conditional use hearing in November, where testimony was taken concerning impacts that that sign may have had on adjacent properties and within the general vicinity. Norwood Apartments was designated as somewhere where some buffering and some mitigation would be appropriate, and other areas were not identified at the time.
Correct.
Borough council, based on the information, had at the time made a decision in December to grant the approval, the conditional use is a permitted use, the applicant simply needs to present evidence that it meets certain standards, that it doesn't violate the health, safety, and welfare of the community. At the time, no one objected to the sign, and there wasn't any evidence that there would be any impacts on any of the properties other than the ones that were mentioned. So from a strict land use perspective, that decision is final, there isn't anything the borough can do to amend the decision or reissue the decision. But you can simply try to work with the applicant to see if the applicant will take care of the mitigative efforts that are being proposed, I think, as of today. So unfortunately, the borough had its hands tied, and we would've been facing what's called a validity challenge, meaning that's what Phoenixville went through, if we didn't provide for that sign somewhere in the borough, we could've had that sign anywhere in the borough. So it's a situation that all municipalities face with respect to billboard signs, which under the law in Pennsylvania are legitimate business uses, that every municipality needs to provide for.
And we don't oppose the legitimate use of the legislation, we're simply trying to come up with some criteria and some authority at the local level, so that when it comes to the question of lighting or viewshed, which is not mentioned in the law, or how we deal with accident rates, we can do that. It's gonna take the next six months to find out from everyone, including the industry. We can start immediately, however, on legislation involving the PENDOT permitting process, that is an easy one to do. I really believe that if you were there at the site from the beginning, you know, PENDOT goes and does the permit, and that in the law required you to look at what possibility was going to be done with that road, it would've made a difference, might've made a difference to the applicant. Because I don't, you know, depending if they do the Norwood Road, it could, what's gonna happen to the sign? And what is it in relationship to the road? And that is one, and that possibility of doing that had been discussed for the last year, to use what we did on Route 202 here as we expand to Route 30. Because for the last two years, we've sat and been very concerned about when Route 202 opens and relays, you're gonna be clogged unbelievably compared to even what I had to get through today. And so if those kinds of discussions could be required, we would understand a little better.
I'll go very back in a little bit, bring back. That's okay. Mark, you're done with that, Steve. Since then, can you tell, once we found out, can you please tell everyone what you reached out to the builders, the sign? Since then, you did, you did a mailer?
We sent out a certified letter to what we believe were the affected property owners that could see the sign. We did meet with the owners, Catalyst Outdoor, they went out, they looked at it, there was some buffer that had been removed from PENDOT, and I think they did their lighting analysis, obviously, in the fall, so there was more foliage than there is now currently, or was in the coming. So they agreed to look at it and plant landscape screenings on each of the affected properties. They were concerned with trying to negotiate with additional property owners down the hill, down the grade, they felt that the best screening they could put in and provide that would be immediately effective was on the property line. So that would've been fifteen foot, some type of arboriding trees that wouldn't lose their leaves in the fall, and it would be a year-round screen. So I sent that out, I get a few replies.
How many did you mail out?
I mailed out only six.
Six, six separate things?
Yeah.
Out of the six we have over here. What it was, I think the company asked you to get all of them together so they could do a plan, if I'm wrong, so they could do a plan to try to take care of most of them.
Right, we didn't go throughout Lake Drive and see whose, you know, property may be on the hill, if they were in the restroom, they could see the sign, it was just the immediately impacted residents with their backs of their own to the sign. So we sent them out, we had one response, we got about one, two, three, three responses. One was in favor of landscaping, one said he did not need the landscaping, the third was had a lot of questions and was not in favor of the landscaping, but wanted more action. And that's where we are so far, we didn't hear back from, I believe, three of the folks.
So we're trying to work with it, so they reached out, they're not obligated to do it, but the borough did reach out to them, we sent the mailers out, asked them if they would get on board with it, and Catalyst said they would try to do some kind of vegetation, be very high trees, come in with high ones, they grow a foot high. So they are, we are trying to work with them, we started early to try to get something that they're not doing, and of course, we'll keep trying to get more, as it gets more.
And as, Mr. President, I'd like to say as a precaution, they did go out and verify that the lighting nits that you imposed on them to be much different during the evening hours with a photocell and with the sign turning off at eleven-thirty as a precaution to people that could see it. They did verify that information, and I think Tom is waiting to get the report back. But they felt that there was, in the measurement of lighting, it was five hundred nits in the evening, they were running about three hundred. So they were below what was imposed by conditional use.
Were they interested at all, or did we ask them if they would change, per the senator's reservation, change the times of the billboards just during the day? Is that something?
I did, I did, I did talk with them about that, and they said, look, we had agreed to eleven-thirty and come, return back on at six, we have since sold advertising. Every minute the billboard is off, we're actually going to lose revenue, so they were not in favor of changing the times that were imposed on there by council. So they would much rather pay for screening and still continue to collect, obviously, the revenue from the advertising, but shelter the rest of that question.
And the screening may help the residents. Steve, do we have, Mark, do we have anything else to say, Steve, on this already? Tom is, yeah, Tom, we had questions about whether there was any act of violations, they did meet the terms, and all I think, the way he said it, so there is no act of violations with the things that were settled.
I did get the raw data today about the light intensity, I have two thousand lines of data from the last two weeks, every ten minutes, that does show that the sign shuts off, that does show the percentage of production, I'm still waiting for the factory calibration data, the actual certifications. The data they showed me today does indicate that the sign is in compliance with the conditions.
So they're compliant, and you're waiting for that to come back, and if it isn't, you will address that, correct?
Correct.
All right, so right there, I think that's what we have in the way of boroughs, I think, of borough representatives, I think now we're gonna open it up to the citizens' concern, and again, without answers, tone them only, take your turn, give everybody a try, a chance, I'm sorry, we're trying to go with some kind of sequence, so I was getting one to do whatever. If we'd like to start off, if anybody on this side, shall we hand it just who would like to, and what we'd ask is, if you have one representative to talk, if you only thought the same thing, try not to get into repetition and saying the same things over and over, if at all possible.
Mr. President, can I ask you something to the senator first?
I'm just gonna go through some people, there might be some other, some of these may be answered by them, come on up and we'll fix it, I promise.
My name's Paul Dan, I live through, one on Big Drive. Moet Kelly and I moved to Downingtown in 2008, and in 2009 moved to our house. The idea that we would, you know, grow a family here, much like our neighbors, we moved here for scenery, for the ease of access to the public park system. How beautiful this county is. So you can kind of imagine our surprise when we go to put our two-year-old to bed and there's a light shining in front of her. That night, Moet Kelly immediately addressed you guys, and you guys responded, we came to the following council meeting and addressed the issue of the bed. Since we've also met with Senator Dammian and Mayor Maxwell and U-Chip in its own couple times to go over it, but what's kind of been disconcerting is learning that it seems like the sign company kind of blatantly misled council in, as Dammian showed in his diagrams, the light is not showing where they said it would. In fact, they also said there would be rupers in place, so all we can see is a soft floor, and that's simply not the case, and we can at least read each advertising. In reference to them turning the sign down in intensity, we don't really, I mean, by eyeball measurement, it doesn't seem like that's been the case, but that could also be a factor, more people advertising. So you're going from yellow to pink to purple to white, you know, at ten o'clock, you know? And as far as planting trees goes, you're talking about planting trees that we are then, if they're put on our property, we would then be responsible for caring for, when in fact, this isn't our problem. We didn't do this, we didn't ask for this, we weren't even asked permission or even our thoughts on the sign going up. So being, you know, asked to put screening on our property is frankly assault. You know, and then that even brings up the other issue, I mean, even dense in it for its trees, have you seen the movie E.T.? When the UFO lands, the light comes to the trees, I mean, come on, it's a trick, it's not a wall. It's just, it's a little disappointing, and it's a little disappointing that this happened, and I appreciate your efforts, I know you guys are working very hard, and Senator Dammian's, you know, got actively involved, and I can't thank you enough for what you guys have done for us.
We'll keep trying, I promise. Anything we can do with that, I'll keep trying.
Thank you, I appreciate it, I just wanted to reiterate, just do us right, I mean, as Dammian said, I mean, we spend millions of dollars in our county, you know, we love it here, everyone loves it here, you know, like, we don't want to leave, and if we were to leave, I mean, you know, who should say, you know, what exactly our property value effectively to buy? You know, we contacted real estate people just to see what general consensus was, and they immediately said you're gonna have to probably knock twenty-five to thirty grand off the cost of house, just to get people motivated to come see the house, because as soon as they come down farmhouse, they're gonna see the sign.
Who's paying us that?
Excuse me, Kelly, please.
I'm Miss White.
Come up to the safety, please, say your name, I ask, please, I have some order here, I don't want yelling and screaming.
I'm Paul Vane, three oh four North Lake Drive, I'm Paul Vane's wife, just like you want to be distinct. Who's paying us the thirty thousand dollars we would eventually lose if you were, if this were a house? Like he had stated, please don't do anything, and I know that we have discussed how we would discuss this, but your conversation about the buffer is, I agree, frankly, I'm sorry. It is not my job to take care of these trees, fifteen feet is not going to cover the houses on farmhouse, who need about thirty, forty feet high. You're not only excluding the fact that they will be able to see it, it's now our responsibility to take care of these trees. They're right across the cable lines that it ices very easily in Downingtown. So if they were to fall, it's my problem, not yours anymore. We also have some very mature trees that are going to be taken out this summer, so that's actually going to decrease the buffer zone for the poor neighbors in one farmhouse. So yeah, you're already estimating that we have a buffer, we already have it in our plant, that buffer's gonna go away for those people. Can you consider that? And I was one of the people who did not answer, and our answer, frankly, is no, you're not planting any trees on my property.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll be very brief, my name is Bobby J. Burmore, three oh two North Lake Drive. Hello.
Hello, you don't want to go?
Yes, and I have a paper to have to, but I'm not gonna do that. Yes, and I have a paper to have to, but I'm not going to do that. You know, you talk about putting in buffers and that community is so beautiful. And I come home every day after work, up 1:13, down Farmhouse, and boom, there it is. It wipes out your whole mood. I consider it to be a bully, that billboard. I have renamed it from the movie theater in the sky. It's a bully. That just encourages you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Well, Sarah.
Good evening.
Good evening, Sarah.
I'm Sarah Pag. My address is, I'm equitable owner of the, my company's equitable owner of the Carden Hines property that I'm purchasing from the borough. So, let's say the borough and my company are partners on this. You know, I second what I heard tonight that the borough was misled because I saw the representations of where this light was supposed to shine and I went back and looked myself last night in the evening and it really is different from what it's there today. And it does affect the borough in other ways because the purchase price for the property, which you guys spent, both in sale of the property and a percentage of the ultimate purchase prices on homes, is devalued by the monstrosity, for lack of a better word, that's making Las Vegas pale in comparison. Let me just, I did some calculations. There's about 16 dwellings that are affected, I think, in the new development, you know, by, by the, by the view of the billboard directly or indirectly. And I don't think that the trees are going to do it. I have a suggestion. I think it's fantastic the digital world can, you can change things around, add a drop of a hat. I believe they can, they can adjust the size of their ads very easily because they ask the applicants, they ask the advertisers to submit the camera ready art. You can submit it in any size you want, that maybe at a certain hour that goes to a smaller frame within the total size of the billboard. I think you guys have some legal recourse potentially since what was represented to you wasn't exactly what was delivered. And I noticed in the conditional use here in testimony that you have the right to advertise in, if it was one of the advertisers, you can take one of those six second slots. And it's possible that if you can't get anywhere legally since we've passed the appeal here, you could take out some advertisement in that, in that six seconds. That wouldn't be the most, you know, positive message for the other advertisers to be in association with you. You could say, you know, we've been had, you know, this has been, this company has not done right by us. And maybe that might affect the people's willingness to advertise. And the point about it not these people advertising having commitments, their monthly commitments. So, you know, if they've sold the advertising, it's only for a month. Because I, I know, because we take out these ads in other places which are more in the highway situation, but.
On the billboard?
Yeah. So, it's not like they're indefinitely obligated to these advertisers that, you know, when the contract remains, they can change the terms. So, just some suggestions to think about. It does affect the borough, you guys, financially eventually, not to mention residents, which I think are, you know, pretty obvious.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Anyone else on the left side? All right, switch everybody to the right. Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you say that?
Hi, my name's Ronnie Fredsell.
I'm sorry, can you take, because she's, thank you. She's writing it, that's why.
Okay, I'm Ronnie Fredsell, Bill, and I've been in downtown as old as I am, about many years. Did you say that the sign is being turned off?
Address, please, I should do it. She thought for a minute, so let's see the address.
305 North Lake Drive. I'm on the other side.
Okay.
Okay, it doesn't directly affect me, it indirectly affects me. Because if their value goes down, so does mine. Did you say the sign is turned off at 11:30?
I don't, you'll have to, I don't understand exactly.
It's not. I came home at 12:30 on Saturday night and I felt like I took the drive-in coming down Farmhouse Road. That sign is not turned off.
The westbound side only, so.
So, I'm on it.
Have you noticed?
It's not doing nothing good. It's the west, like, when I'm coming down Farmhouse at 12:30 Saturday night, that sign was bright and you could see it. It was definitely shining and these people were there.
Can you look in the head, there you go, check that. Do you help check?
Yeah, because it's not being turned off. I mean, we all, right now, our houses are devalued at least 25 to 30,000 dollars. And that's not okay. We didn't buy, we didn't buy in downtown to lose value on our houses. And we have probably one of the nicest areas. And it's not going to be nice anymore because once the houses are devalued, then the element that comes into the neighborhood isn't that great. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side? Sure, come on up.
Hi, everybody. PJ Payton, 302 North Lake.
Thank you.
Now, we just moved in, in September. And value of the home, of course, is going to go down. I don't think that we would have even looked at that property if we had seen that sign there in September and paid quarter million dollars for a house. Okay? And when you're talking about a buffer on somebody's property, an A yard, everybody's working hard to keep that, that's a beautiful neighborhood. It really truly is. But when you come down that hill and you see that sign, it's bigger than our house. It's huge. It's bigger than our house. You couldn't put a bigger one out there. And not to mention, the certified letters that went out to just 86 people, doesn't affect the people up on the street above North Lake Drive. That house, that street's elevated. They see down over the houses and that affects them along the farms. So, there's so many more people, and you know, from coming to the meeting that we had at our house that Sunday, a lot of people came down Farmhouse from that neighborhood all to attend to that meeting. So, you know, I got to tell you, it probably was probably one of the worst things. And I, deception, as far as the information you received, I just don't think that's a proper word. Or I would say a lot worse.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Take care. Anyone else? Forget it. You, you, oh, later. I'm not saying you can't, okay? On this side here, do we have anyone who would like to make a comment? Hold on, hold on, hold on, this side we have. All the way back there, come on up. Take your time.
Yeah, I'm Jamie McMurray from 410 Farmhouse Road. And one of the ones that was up, you know, yeah, higher up. So, when you talk about putting these trees in, we're up high enough so that when we come out the front door, those trees wouldn't make any bit of difference at all. We look straight out. And property value, I think if we ever had to sell our house, hopefully it would be in the middle of summer because someone coming middle of winter, you come out the front door, look to the left and you see the sign. It doesn't matter what trees are there. We see the sign over top because we're up higher. So, just want to throw it out.
What was your address? I'm sorry.
410.
Thank you.
Farmhouse. Farmhouse, yes.
Any, I know, I believe you had a question or two, if Council had, you wanted to ask something?
Yeah, I do, yeah. I actually have one question for Tom, you asked, and that is the louvers. Didn't we hear something about louvers? And can those be adjusted? I swear, they said something about that it could be adjusted so that the, so the image wouldn't be viewed, that they can adjust the viewing angle of the image. Am I wrong? Were there louvers that can be adjusted?
Sarah, they use the word louvers, but they're permanent and cannot be adjusted. The way, the way the LEDs are calibrated and engineered, the view gets less sharp the further from the center of the, the further from the center of the sign you are. So, further south in target part you would have a view as you came up. You would see some of the, some of the light, residual light. And then, of course, when you're straight on, you get the most clear picture. That's how I remember the testimony and that's what makes sense with the engineering.
Well, that's the point, if they, if they.
As far as I know, they're not adjustable.
Maybe that's something they could do as far as changing it for, and that would be, that would be, that would be, that would solve it. That would put them back into what the testimony that they gave us, that the louvers are preventing then the image from, from spreading out that more, just for the view shed, just like Senator Denman was saying. They, I don't know how difficult that would be, but I think that would be something definitely worth asking because then you wouldn't need the trees to buffer, you wouldn't, because it would be pulling the image in and narrowing that, that view shed.
If Council had any questions that they would like them to have, we'll look into, Council, we're going to look into several things that the citizens said. We're up, we're up and trying to work with them to try to get them anything, anything, no matter how small the help, helping someone.
That's what just came to mind. But, so as far as the Senate.
Yes.
You talked about the Norwood, you know, the expansion of Norwood Road. So, are you familiar with the Pendott plan itself? That will it be, will it be taking land where the billboard is? There's a point.
Well, this is an interesting, this is an interesting question, you know, thanks for asking. We will become more familiar on Monday morning. There's going to be a series of alternatives. And, and we've been trying to figure out in our discussions, how do we get the three lanes in that area? And we don't want to get close to your houses and you have a sound wall there. So, one of the solutions, similar to what we did on 202 in several spots, is, and if the, remember, the X is not going to be a Walrus Road anymore. It's all going to be at 1:13, which is a more appropriate place anyway. So, one of the solutions is you have a feeder road that goes in. And Norwood Road is, at least we discussed the possibility of that thing, a feeder road. So, what, it'll be clearer, but my point I was trying to make was that if in the permit process, we were required to, that the, Pendott had the borough there, borough would be there from the beginning, and we, and the question was asked, is there any changes on this highway that's planned? And, and we've been talking about Route 30 bypass for a number of years. And because we knew that as soon as we opened the three lanes, which will be in several months, you know, we're just working on the last part of it now, it's, more and more people are going to take the 30 bypass to get to work because, and, and what happens? So, you understand that this is why the accident rate and other things and the volume is important. There are very few roads that go north-south because of the Brandy one, all right? And what happens is, excuse me, east-west. So, the main way to get down to 322 is the major corridor. And you know how crowded that's getting. The way you get to, where a lot of people work in the Route 202 corridor, you know, Great Valley and other places, is you have to take the Route 30 bypass and then connect to 202. But as long as, remember, it's only two lanes and a lot of people figured out other ways to go. But we know that we're going to have a tremendous volume increase. In fact, if you look at the projections, which both the state and the planning commission that put out, you know, they project, you know, 2020, 2040, we're seeing tremendous new traffic. And so, Mike, so what I want to make sure in any legislation that, that, that is something that has to be discussed. So, I hope that works.
Yeah, that's good. So, if you do talk about discussions on where to put the roads, it's okay to kind of nudge the sign out, just say it. But then, two other, two other quick questions for you. One is if you could tell us where the meeting is and the time and place and all that. And the other, is nobody in the public? And then the other question I have for you is.
Well, it's a meeting that Steve knows, I believe, that they formed you at 10:00 a.m. in downtown. Oh, yeah, we went to one years ago. And so, and I presume any elected official is welcome to go.
So, it's not a public meeting, it's a public?
It's for, well, anyone in the public can show up too. I mean, Pendott, you know, has an obligation to have any meeting. We don't, so they, this is.
Normal.
No.
The other question I have for you is, are you familiar with the changes to the Federal Highway Unification Act? Do you know how does that play in or how, in the interplay between that and Pendott? What's going on here in the billboard?
Well, this is, this is an important question. And, and so, what we need to do in any legislation that we put together is to, and I've asked my staff to look, to study that, because we need to integrate that. We'll have a federal obligation integrated. And the question, we know what it means on federal highways, all right? But, you know, that, but the, and the question is, is how it impacts and how, who's paying for it? In other words, if the federal government is paying, they have a greater say than it is paid for by the state. And so, we're trying to ascertain that question. And I know there's a number of groups in Philadelphia that have been working on this matter of scenic highways. And this is an important question for us because, you know, it's beyond just the downtown situation. We have to get some answers. We have to, every time technology changes, we have to begin to adjust our statute. I mean, this is not a good comparison, but for example, we can create life outside the Louvre now. But only thing we do now is we have to use old contract law for, you know, when things go awry. So, it's, and we're going to drive less cars eventually. And what, and there's a concept called, the professor, cultural lag and the inability to keep up with change. And part of the state's problem, not only on this, on these billboards and this technology, but on a variety of problems, issues is, we're not keeping the law in conjunction with the changing technology. So, part of it is to ask that, part of it is to see what other states are doing, part of it is to turn, is to come in with the federal legislation. And most important for us, understand what's most important. We have invested millions and millions of dollars to preserve the view sheds of this county. And we need, and other counties have done the same, but we were the first, one-fifth, actually it's more than that, is 28% of the land in this county is in permanent use. Something you should all be very proud of. We, no county can match that. And we have to make sure that it's not just the billboards, but anything that will impact on everything we've done. You know, I was one of the architects of this back in the 90s. And, and we have to, and that, and that's just the state money, I mean, the county money. And we voted in community after community if they wanted to be taxed for open space. And believe it or not, they voted yes. What else would anyone around here, if I was trying schools, we'd know it, unfortunately. But the point is, what I'm trying to get at is, this, there is no more important matter to the citizens of this county than the preservation of the land. And it is the very essence of what it means to Winchester counties. And that's why the citizens vote this way. So, what we have to do is find those solutions on, within the law to give, maybe there needs to be a set of criteria that a rural council would ask by law and get answers to it. I'm not, I'm not going to tell you I know what the answer is. I do know what the answer is on Pendott and the procedures because I know how to do that. So, my job for the next six months is, because remember, everything we put in, in any bill we put in, ends in November, two years. So, the real reality is we have to get this in the beginning of next session. The regulation one, I can get in now because there's a chance we can get through with Senator after his help. So, I wanted, I'm going to do the research and I have the staff already working on that research. And again, I want to ask the industry to help, you know, so that we together can work these solutions. And I think, and I think, you know, this, when I, when people came to testify, this is a wonderful town. It's a small town, we all know each other, we all work together, you know, we've worked for 30 years together. I was originally in the downtown school ward, I was first elected office back in 75. And so, in this county, we work it out. Maybe it's our Quaker heritage. Remember? You try to find a consensus to find things. And, and that's my hope. And in the legislature, it'd be nice if people, you know, we're so afraid of compromise in the legislature, we had nothing done. But we have to get this done and we have to figure out how to do it and in a way that everyone will agree on. And I think the citizens have told you, you know, what is a more important investment of any one of us here than our house? And, and, you know, that's important. And so, I do appreciate your questions and also the fact that, you know, that. of any one of us here than our house? And, and you know, that's important. And so I, I do appreciate your questions and also the fact that, you know, that, that you were willing to endorse this without any question, without reservation, because you know to, we have to solve.
Andy, when you, Senator, when you called us, we said we'd get on board right away once we realized there was a problem.
Yes, you did.
And you were trying to do, I said, whatever you need, we'll do. But while we're doing, anybody else up here have a question for?
Not for, not for Senator.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
And I just listened to.
Guys, I said you could talk, if somebody forgot something or say anything else, you more of up and talk before I close, close this whole.
It's important if you have something to say, to say.
Sure, come on, come on right up, sure.
I just got a small statement here. My name's Keith Gilpin, 301 North Lake Drive.
Thank you.
As Ann stated about the deflectors, and I think Paul also mentioned them, my thought was, would it be cheaper to put up another panel that looked off the view for everybody up North Lake, Farmhouse, Blackwater, Bobcats? From what I can see on the drawings, that should be able to be done. It's a simple panel, I would think it'd be a lot cheaper than all the lot of trees, full grown trees.
You can ask them, we'll put it on the list, promise. Thank you. Our idea then, closing, if there's not much more, we're going to end this topic. Thank you very much.
I know council is involved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I have six questions.
Oh, I guess, I'm sorry, I asked anybody.
No, not at Senator's dinner, I just have a talk with the solicitor, if that's possible.
Sure.
So Mark, how long have we had it on the books that that area has been zoned?
I honestly don't know.
So for several years it's been there.
You mean industrial.
Industrial.
Industrial's been there sort of.
So if we had voted no that night, what would have happened?
Well, it was a permitted use and they probably would have appealed it and, you know, we would have had some litigation, but it was, it's a permitted use in that zone.
So they had really every right to put it there?
That's correct.
There was really nothing you could have done other than litigate it?
That's correct, yes.
We had voted no. I just wanted to say that because I had said during the conditional use, I don't like this, and they said, well, it's going to be coming anyway. So I just wanted to clear that up.
Right, so during the conditional use process, you have the ability to put conditions if there are issues that were identified?
Correct.
There were certain issues that were identified and some.
Thank you, that's all I.
Good question, Phil, you have one?
Yes, one, and this also is kind of geared towards Mark. We all agree, I think everybody agrees looking back, they promised this one thing and they deliver another. Why doesn't that like null and void the contract or, you know, let's select a stand on and say, hey, you know? I mean, I'll, I'll be honest, what's the point? You know, next guy that comes in that wants to do something is now, he's going to tell me something and, and I'm going to be thinking, really, is this guy, you know, on smoke or what? I mean, we all didn't imagine that they, and I, what I pictured, that if the structure, if was going to be visible from the North Lake Drive area, that you would see this rectangular thing and from that angle it would be completely dark. And I don't see any diminishing of the, of the sign at any end.
Well, we can't. Maybe, maybe you like. All right, it's a stage, it's not so, Josh, go ahead.
I thought, I thought Phil had a question. Well, I thought you had a question, I was looking for you.
Well.
Yes.
I mean, there was an anticipated use and there were certain issues that were raised concerning where you were going to see the sign. It wasn't discussed concerning other locations other than the Overhouse apartments. So I think the borough right now is trying to work with the sign company to take litigative efforts to deal with that situation. But it's an industrial zoning district and that's where that use is permitted and as long as the, the effects of the use don't go beyond what you would anticipate a sign of that type being, then, you know, there's nothing that the borough can do other than we can try to put conditions to mitigate the issue.
Thank you. Kind of very good. Josh?
Yeah, a couple things. It's really disappointing when we try to work with each other and downtown, of course, it's a good neighbor community, we really focus on the type of behavior that fits in your culture, if they have a neighbor. I don't think that this company came in with that type of attitude. And very disappointed since they've had issues in other towns, just as I know that, I believe based on what I've heard in speaking to folks around the county, they should have known that these people were going to be affected. And I'm disappointed as mayor of downtown that these folks feel that they've been taking advantage of, because I agree. I think there's a couple things that council should consider, as much as such mayor, I can recommend to borough council to do that. I'll tell you, I think you made a very, very good point that 14-foot trees do nothing for the other blocks and this neighborhood, the Philly, the Farmhouse and some other streets, vacancy of this property, the billboard is as much. And if they, if this billboard wants to, billboard company wants to fit in with the downtown community, I think they need to go a step further into moving the community's needs. So I think we need to go back to and say, you know, in downtown, we want higher trees, we want them to take an extra step to make sure that this community needs a, a, that. I think they should consider strongly reducing the size of the X after a certain time. I think they should be already offering to reduce these X at night. I think they're too big. I also think they should do what they can to work with the senator on his legislation. We really want to conserve ourselves a good neighbor community. And they saw the borough council just get behind the senator's law. I would appreciate the billboard company in an effort to repair the relationships with this community, get on and support the senator as well. So I couldn't be more disappointed at the result of this conditional use hearing. I think council was misled, even if there was anything they could do. But people here care about their neighbors and I don't think that they stepped in in the way that we like to carry ourselves in that community. I hope that, I would ask of them to do everything they possibly can to help their neighbors out.
Thank you. Anyone else? Guys, I don't.
I have one last thing, just one last request. Bobby, Jim, or three, or Steven, or four?
I'm sorry, I'll take, you know, I'll be careful.
I would just like, we have not had good communication, you know, like, we as citizens have been really upset about this, wondering what's happening, what you're, you know, we've heard a lot of, we're working on it, we're working on it. But I think we would, I'm not going to say handle it better, but if we had better communication updates, as far as the communication with Catalyst or whoever the sign company is, we would, whoever can provide us updates as to, hey, is it going to be turned down? Is it only going to be on certain hours? There were a lot of ideas brought up here. So I would like that to happen, better communication.
And if you have, if you have questions, it's like we can't call the solicitor up and have, you can't call and answer everybody. Everybody can call Catalyst, everybody can, if you call, we'll, we'll get an update together. Some people ask me if I can electronically, we do it every day, we'll come down and tell. Some, some things take time and they are working on, even though you don't think we're doing something. But, but the go-to person, you go through the borough, everything we do should go through the manager and the staff. And that's, that's how we try not to independent, we try to strengthen numbers.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sure, come on up.
I'm sorry, guys, I spoke once already.
No, sorry, name, name.
PJ, Katie, 302 North Lake.
Thank you.
Phil brought up a really good point about what everything was stated to you guys and how you were really deceived and how these people came in and they deliver something totally different than what was really you thought expected and how it's really hurt everybody in this community and it really should not be happening that way. You know, I'm really, I'm glad you brought that up because it's really important. If somebody else came in here and just bully this town, before you know it, it'll be downtown Tokyo Arena. I mean, do you guys want that in your neighborhood? For a house that's $250,000? I don't think so. You know? But I think really, it's, and as far as the brightness, whatever, the allotment of, whatever, what do you call it? It's off the chart.
Nits.
It's off the chart.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right, Sarah, come on up.
I, I just thought of something else. In the course of all these great ideas.
I'm sorry, Sarah.
Pardon, cons, equitable. In the course of all these discussions, first of all, you did have a little bit of negotiating room in the conditional use approval. It wasn't completely by right because they wanted a second sign, they wanted certain concessions. You had some negotiating room. So just so you know, it, it, right now, you do have, the only thing you have to stand on is the fact that they agreed that they would implement the conditions in accordance with what they represented in their hearing. So legally, they are obligated to follow what it is they represent. Yeah, I'm not a lawyer, I've been accused of practicing without a license, but perhaps your solicitor can confirm this. It's my understanding you have 30 days to appeal from discovery. Discovery would have been when it was lit, which was April 5th. So tomorrow will be the deadline of 30 days. If you wanted to just put a placeholder in the ground, just, even, wouldn't cost that much money, but just something to hold, that would get them to the negotiating table, I think. Because, yeah, okay, they're probably used to having lawsuits out of, you know, it sounds like this is the first, you know, rodeo they've been on. I keep using these Las Vegas analogies tonight, but it does sound like they had this happen before. But if you want some kind of leverage to at least get to a negotiating table, you might think about filing an appeal before tomorrow's deadline, just to be able to have a place to be tabled. And they don't want any more litigation.
Thank you, Sarah, you're the toughest person I ever.
Anyway.
Sarah, you're tough.
Just so that I can respond to that.
Sure.
I would leave the borough to file an appeal until the decision.
Okay. Thank you. All right, do you hear that, Sarah? You say it doesn't leave, the borough can file an appeal until the decision.
Can residents?
Wait, I'm sorry, we, we got one more person over here. So I'm sorry, you want to come up and talk? I saw your hand waving. I didn't want to overlook you off, I guess. Oh, no, thank you.
This is just a question. My name is Shawna Kelly, 308 North Lake.
Thank you.
Super awkward to say that. I just had a question, even if you were to like block it, I'm not a realtor or an appraiser, so just knowing that it's a certain amount of distance away from our house, does that automatically, no matter what, devalue our property or no? As long as it's blocked?
I don't know, I don't even want to either, like, when you hear the lubebers and they put the walls up, the walls are right there, but you still hear the sound. I, I, I don't know, I don't know what that would be, to be honest.
I'm going to take a guess that Ms. Peck could probably answer that, maybe. Do you think?
I don't think so. I think if you, if you, if you're impacted by.
Sarah. Sarah.
I'll keep, I'll keep the order. If no more.
I'm sorry.
I don't know if there are any other real estate experts in here, but I know that Ms. Peck is.
I, I don't think just, it's a matter of whether you see it, whether you hear.
It's all visual.
But I do think it has a very serious devaluation effect on property values.
Oh, yeah. I do.
It would be covered, but, yeah. If you're just, no, I don't think it would affect you, you're not seeing it or impact you.
I was just.
Thank you.
Also, it's really bright. They turn it down for like a little bit and then they turn it back up. Whatever did it?
We'll look into that, we'll have Tom look into it.
You did have, you did in your hearing testimony have 750 feet used as when you wouldn't see it. So one of the interesting questions is, if these houses are of more than 750 feet of the sign, remember, in the testimony if it was more. And that's just another aspect of the commitment made that would be part of your negotiation. I mean, statements were made, you have a right in negotiations to ask people to keep their word, legally or not. I think the mayor's point was, we're a good neighbor community, we want people to keep their word. And you certainly have a right to, as part of negotiations, to ask that.
Kelly, you have a question?
Can residents?
Kelly, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
304 North Lake Drive, can residents file an appeal?
People can try to file.
What, that you try? Yes.
Anybody.
Yes or no?
I could give you an opinion as to whether or not a court would accept it, but you could certainly try. Anybody can try.
So do you think, Sarah?
What about the deadline?
They would file an appeal with the boroughs, they have to file appeals somewhere up that, like a court. Like would the process be that they would, they would come to the borough saying, I'm appealing the conditional use decision that you've made? No.
Are there any words to do that?
If the 30-day limitation to file appeals, that 30 days is coming along by several months.
But not, they only, it's like, they only just realize it until the time is turned on. They had to.
Eight, nine, ten. Guys, let's try not to holler out.
Well, you, you would have to make an argument that your constitutional rights have been violated.
They have.
A judge. And, you know, at this late stage, the boroughs could just file an appeal because it's our own decision.
That answer, Kelly?
I think the boroughs, I think the boroughs should be action.
Yes.
Yep.
Any other comments? Oh, Josh, do I have to wrap it up?
I think we need to find out if we can file an appeal and if we can.
Just do it. So I'm just saying, we couldn't file, you know.
I think, I think, let me finish.
Sorry.
Sorry, no, okay. If what Sarah said is correct in that it's from discovery and from when the light is lit, I, I see no loss to the borough unless it's incredibly expensive to do so. I think that we need to make sure, look into what Sarah said, and if that's the case, then we should file an appeal. If nothing else, to make sure that our residents need to imagine. The, the sign company has the opportunity to, to exerting their power to help them. To this point, they have not done that. So I think an appeal is worthy unless a monstrous legal loss comes, but I don't see that as the case.
Thank you. All right, guys, like that's the pass, and we're getting ready to wrap it up, and that will be.
I have a.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I go ahead.
I don't say, I don't, I don't, I don't think that, as the solicitor said that we can't, Thompson said that we can't really appeal anything. I would say the probably council's action would be to, maybe give them a citation because they're not complying with the conditional use. I would absolutely hardly support issuing a citation or a cease and desist or whatever it is that zoning does, but from our zoning officer to notifying them that they are not